We're gonna call this meeting to order and start with the pledge of allegiance. Can I have a motion for approval of the present agenda as amended? Okay, so we're gonna start out with a public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes to talk about any issue on today's agenda. There will be a second public comment at towards the end of the meeting that will be an open public comment for members to speak about any issue pertaining to the school district. If anyone would like to speak about items on today's agenda, feel free to to sign in. At the front, or if you're online, you can raise a digital hand using the button at the bottom of your screen. Do we have online attendees?
Yes, we have two.
And I'll just wait one moment in case someone would like to speak about tonight's agenda. Okay, we're gonna move into board. And just looking at the agenda. It's probably a little over an hour, but we'll we'll see how fast we move through this. Board member comment, does anyone, does anyone want to comment on graduation week, right?
The weather holds out for us on Friday.
We are, we are watching that. It's not looking like it's. We may not escape rain free. Well, I I know everything's in flight here. It's a busy week. We can move on if no one else has board comments. We will move into board recognition. So we are honoring a departing board member. Pat Wilson. Who's, Pat, how many years has it been? Five, six, seven? Okay. So. That's, that's great. So.
What's it really feel like though? Twenty years?
I, I feel like I've been here for five years, I thought, but maybe you were on. Yeah, yeah. So you're gonna have to find wall space, it looks like.
That's which is thanks, Pat.
And and really thank you for carrying the community burden, I think. So I'd like to thank you from the community's perspective as well. So we have another board recognition. We have. Six departing Chatham staffers. Cumulatively, it's a whole lot of years. Sal, do you have anything you want to say here? I can, I can read it out.
No, I just want to say I'm always in awe when you start to see our staff that have just a tremendous number of years of service. I mean. I have five, so if you have a six, I'm missing someone, but you know, from twenty to forty years, and that's an entire. You know, entire career devoted to to the school district. So we are extraordinarily fortunate. And I know we're gonna go individually, but just in behalf of the superintendent and the administration here, thank you so much for your your dedicated service to the district and to the students, obviously.
So I I think it's, it's five upcoming, but we have one. Michelle Haley's on here from February.
Yeah, I have Michelle. Maybe. Oh, I don't have Anita Blair.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna read through them.
Absolutely.
Anita Blair, teacher's aide with thirty-four years of service, retiring this year. Diana Burt Williams. Our bus ditch dispatcher for forty years of service. Rosemary Calvi, our public library clerk with twenty-seven years of service. Timothy Mead, a cleaner with thirty-five years of service, and Mary Sacco, our high school TA, thirty-four years of service. It, it's really. It's amazing to think that people have invested so much of their lives.
Yeah, and I just want to add that, you know, Michelle Haley, she was our register at the end of her service, but she was also a secretary one for a number of years. And so. She served a couple of different roles, and I didn't want, we didn't want that to go without being recognized. Thank you. A big thank to, thank you to all of, all of them. I know we've got a couple of them online, so shout out to you. For at home, and then we do have these nice certificates that we'll make sure that they all get sometime this week.
So here's hoping the remainder of our staff dedicate their lives the way these these six have. I think so. We'd be very lucky.
Great role models.
Yeah. We are into building reports.
So I'd like to invite our principals up. As you know, a year or two ago, we went to a new format where. Principals join us at the beginning of the year, about midway through, and then at the end. And each of them would like an opportunity to kind of share with you and reflect on the year. Some anecdotal comments and some. Information from their perspective as a principal.
I think we're good. We can probably share these two, right? This on? Yes, okay. You want me to start? Okay, so um. I have, we have a lot of really great things going on at MED right now and some things that I want to tell you that did happen. But I want to give you a little bit of a brief academic update. Three times a year, we do an assessment called iReady, and. When we did the iReady assessment in ELA in September, we had, and this is building wide. This is not grade level specific. This is just building wide. We had about eight percent of our students in ELA overall in the building who are reading above grade level. Currently, we have thirty percent of our students who are reading above grade level. We had, at that time, we had eleven percent of our students who were on grade level. Now we have twenty-two percent of our students that are on grade level. Students that were one grade level below, we had fifty-two percent. That's now down to thirty-four percent. I don't know why I'm pointing. And two grade levels below in September, it was nineteen percent. Now it's down to eleven percent. And more than two grade levels below was at ten percent, and now we're down to three percent. And what iReady does is he sets these goals for students so that it sets a goal of what they would want a student to achieve for the year, and then it also sets what's called a stretch goal, like if they can really stretch themselves out. So currently this year, fifty-seven percent of our kids made the typical growth. Stretch goal, but thirty-four percent of our kids made the stretch growth. So we made a tremendous amount of growth in language arts, and our growth in math was also not as great, but also good. We had, in September, we had. Five percent of the kids who were above grade level in math. Now we have twenty-two percent of the kids who are above grade level in math. On grade level was seven percent. Now we're to twenty-two percent. One grade level below was at fifty-seven percent. Now we're down to forty-six. Two grade levels below was twenty-three percent. Now we're only at eight percent. And more than two grade levels below was at nine percent, and we're down to two percent. And again, the students who made their typical growth was forty-seven percent of the students, and then twenty-two percent of the students also met that stretch goal. So we're really proud of the hard work that took place. In ELA and math this year. Um, some stuff that's been going on here at the elementary school. We've taken lots of field trips. We haven't had the advantage of doing that in the last few years. So. We went to Trialbridge Farm. We went to Ooms Farm. The second graders did the rope course at Thatcher Park. The first graders took a trip to the nature center at Thatcher Park, which I got to attend, which was awesome. Third graders, all of them went to Equine Advocates. The fourth graders went to the Mud Creek for an environmental field trip. Second graders took a walking trip to Stewart's because they're learning about money. So they all, they had somebody meet with them about money and finances at Stewart's. Fourth grade went to the Hancock Shaker Museum and fifth grade. This was the first year we've been to Nature's Classroom that we had, we haven't been in a while because of COVID and and because of some nature center. Some of their own internal situations with shutting down sites. So we were able to go this year, and it was eventful. And we were just really excited when they came home. We had a great Arbor Day celebration. We had an. Amazing fourth and fifth grade band orchestra and chorus concert. They were awesome. We had a great drama performance. Pete the Cat author Eric Litwin, he came to our school. Flying Deer came and did a whole presentation with the fourth grade on my side of the mountain. They go up on the trails and they pretend like they, you know, they're living out there, and it was amazing. Our kindergarten had their carnival as they usually do. Fifth grade did a poetry tea. We had the homespun residency. They're a group that's actually from Borisville where I live, and they come in during PE class. And they play music and the kids all learn special dances. They love it. And we did our kindergarten screening, and of course, we did our preschool screening. So there's a lot of stuff that goes on at the end of the year. Anybody have any questions for me? Yes.
Before you, yeah, if you remind me tomorrow, I could send some backup support on the iReady.
Yeah, sure.
With some visual stuff. So if you didn't remember all those numbers tonight, we will send you a copy of that print, the printouts.
The percentages you're talking about, I'm wondering, so that's like across all grades?
Yes.
So are there, did you, are there any significant dips that are consistent? In a grade, like for example, are you noticing? You know, stronger proficiency in general and. The younger grades versus the fifth grade or a fourth grade. I'm just wondering, is it consistent or is it, is it more of a?
No, it's pretty consistent. To be honest, I'd have to dig deeper into that to give you specifics, which I I have no problem doing, or maybe if, when I. Get Sal whatever backup information, I think on the bottom, it's kind of listed, broken out according to grade levels, but I don't want to take too much time. But I think it's pretty much all pretty consistent. I know that the second grade, they've made some tremendous gains this year. That was one. And the fifth grade have made really good grains and gains in both second and fifth grade this year.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I, I have a question as well about those numbers. I I know with our state assessments, we don't have, unfortunately. Our opt-in rate is not perfect. With iReady assessments, I think. We have pretty high participation rates. Like it's, if a kid's not sick, they're getting tested during the testing window, right?
So the, everybody, the, the scores, the, the scores just came out today because everybody is tested. So the. There's usually maybe one or two students in the entire building that aren't tested, but that's it. We make sure that, you know, because we were not, we don't have a prescribed. Time limit like we do for the state assessment, so we can give that within like a two, three week period.
What, what about our IEP children? Are they represented in any way?
Yes, yep. Thank you.
Yeah, it's great seeing that pendulum swing back, so.
Thank you.
And kudos to our teachers.
Yes.
You guys hear me?
Yep.
Alright, so we use the same iReady assessment, and we have the SRI assessment, which is a scholastic reading inventory, which. Gives you more accurate reflections on students' reading comprehension skills. So I have a litany of numbers, just like Kristen does. I'm proud to say that we have pretty much, I think there's one student who my numbers are not reflective of. There's one student left who hasn't. Taken the test. So I think it's a, it's a fair statement to say it's a much more accurate reflection of Chatham as a whole. So my numbers will be reflective of six through eight, and these were tests that were taken. I think we did ours in late May was our last round of testing. So this is the most accurate. So I'll speak in generalities, because I don't have grade by grade broken out. But what I want to say is that when I presented to you guys earlier in this year, I can't remember when my first presentation was, I was concerned about. A large number of kids, two to three grades below in math. I'm happy to say that we have a significant decrease in our number of students that are grades, two to three grade levels below. And I guess if we look at an overall trend. We're seeing that we have a larger number of kids across all three grade levels at the high end who are proficient. And at the low end coming up into one or on grade level. So a goal for ours next year and over the summer is to work on that middle group of kids to find out why we're not exactly hitting those targets there. We'd like to see, I would like to see some improvement in our math kits, but when I talk to you guys about the number of kids that were two to three grade levels below. We've made significant improvement with them. I think that we're down to, I don't have the exact number, or some, I want to say the number is thirty-four kids. And then we have twenty-four kids, twenty-one percent are are at risk before. Well, we had sixty kids out of my. Hundred and ninety-ish kids altogether. So I'm very happy with the math improvement. We can still do better and we can work on that area. We are upgrading our iReady program next year to, was it Ready Classroom, I think it's called. It's the same product. It's just an upgrade and should allow us to do a little more intricate stuff, and we're gonna get some training. For the, that product with our staff. So I'm very happy with math. If I look at our. Diagnostic iReady levels for math, I mean for reading. We made significant improvement. I'm not gonna get the specifics like Kristen. We made a lot of improvement, very much similar to the high end and the low end. We're still have those kids that we have AIS services, academic intervention services. And we have that area which I have here that we want to target right in the middle, because we have some kids that kind of seem to, sorry about that. We have some kids that kind of seem to hopper in that level, and we just can't figure out exactly what the hump is. So we want to address that area as well. Those are two targets of our, of our AIS program. This coming summer and as we move forward next year. Let's see, some other things. This year, we had a specific focus on vocabulary and comprehension of informational text. And the English department AS team gave me specific numbers for that. In the area of vocabulary, this is grade six to eight. We went from thirty-nine percent proficiency rate to fifty-five percent proficiency rate. And in the area of comprehension of informational, informational text, we started off around twenty-nine percent, and we ended at forty-two percent. So that shows that when we really put our mind to it, we can really make changes in specific things. So we're probably gonna stick with that. That method and apply it to math and science next year, really target one area and see if we can get the reflected growth. Let's see. Like I said, we still have eighteen percent of our students who are two to three grade levels below. That's gonna be a focus for math. How can we get them up? I'd like to see numbers like Kristen's, pretty low. So hopefully the rewards that she reaps will be my rewards in a couple of years. So on to some other things. I've lived through the end of eighth grade of a middle school year. It's quite hectic. Friday night, we had. The moving up ceremony, and we had the dance. Before that, we had the National Junior Honor Society induction. So those were back to quote unquote normal. It was good to see people in attendance and and kids were saying that it was back to the traditional, and parents were given the feedback too. So that was good to hear. We have our math carnival coming up. The sixth grade has taken over the math carnival. It used to be the seventh grade. All three grade levels went on field trips. One is on a field trip today to New York City. Sixth grade went to the Bronx Zoo and eighth grade went to Boston. So it was good to have those trips back up and running. We do have a movie Thursday for grade seven through eighth at the Crandall. And moving forward. You know, we tend, we, we want to focus on exactly the areas that I told you to focus on. So next year, that'll be my focus when I talk with all of you guys. But overall, it's been, it's been a year that's gone by in the blink of an eye, but I really enjoyed my time, and the kids have had a, they've had a good year, and we did all the things that we traditionally do at Chatham. So it was good to be back to normal, and I look forward to continuing. Questions?
Do they come in the summertime, did you say?
The students who are in the academic intervention program or the staff that work with that?
No, the students who were.
The students do not come over the summer unless they, we have Arbor Academy. They're not mandated to come at that address.
No, I know they're not.
But we will.
Do they have a choice?
They have a choice, and regardless of what they do over the summer, we'll take the scores that we use now. And we'll build groups for next year for academic intervention services so they can start to work with those kids that were the the neediest. And then that's how we'll start next year with our groupings.
Okay, thank you.
Wondering if you can talk a little bit about. You know, overall, the sort of the well-being. Of the students, you know, just sort of like where they are. You know, if you've noticed. Any significant change from the beginning of the year to now.
I mean, I think that a lot comes with the change in the seasons, and it is spring, and it has been more normal, but I don't really have a point of reference for what the normal middle school kid was before I was there. I will say in general. You know, whereas in the past, we may have had comments, and this is even from coming from MED here, that we may have had comments that kids couldn't resolve conflicts and needed staff to help them a lot more. I would say that our kids have shown a lot of growth there. Our sixth graders, they did a phenomenal job this year. I was very aware of their. Strengths and their weaknesses, let's just say, and they did a phenomenal job at the middle school. The one thing I will tell you is that. Lockers, lockers is is a difficulty. Lots of the kids don't know how to use lockers, and I think it's running into your building, John. Like, we gotta work on lockers and backpacks, because kids just got used to during the pandemic, carrying all their books and just. You know, humping around school, and they need to work on those things. So I, I know it seems very minute. But it's a basic skill that I think that our kids lost coming out of the pandemic that we need to get back to.
What about participation in like clubs and stuff?
Once again, I don't have a point of reference, but we ran every club that that Sal and the district were willing to give me money for. We had all ten of them up and running. And there was plenty of interest on all, all different venues. We had double-digit enrollment in every single club. Which I'm hearing is is back to to as normal as could be. I think kids took the opportunity to participate in those activities. And the way we do it in the middle school is we have a few that are standard, but the rest are whatever the teachers want to run. Then the kids vote, and whoever is the highest ones, that's who we run. So there was a lot of inventory, a lot of interest this year.
Do you want to talk just a little bit about the recent conversations around trying to build some capacity around robotics and the articulation with the high school? It's, I mean, it's, it's, it's very elementary. Phases, but.
So there was, there was interest expressed from the high school robotics team as well as from some of our students about if we could get a middle school program up and running. It came late in the school year, so it didn't run the traditional phase one proposal. But we're trying to make it work, and an idea came that the high school has all the resources and the experience up there. And they have a dedicated space to all store. So I'm working with John to see if we can find a way through my. My clubs to get a middle school or JV robotics club that can work with the high schoolers up at high school. They have a different set of. Challenges that they go through, but it does require some financial startup money, but we're navigating that process, and I'm hopeful. That we can get that up and running to start next year in the fall.
The Chatham Ed Foundation that I belong to, we're very happy to help. Do you have somebody in that in your building that's going to take on that, the robotics?
Well, we actually, we haven't, I haven't even talked with my staff about who would. I would like to have someone. There is also a high school staff who has experience with this.
Okay.
Specific program, but.
Because we, we support the high school one, and I'm sure. I'm sure we, we would support the middle. It has to be. A slide for, and I think someone from our committee is going to speak opening day to the teachers.
Appreciate that, yeah.
We, we have, just, just so you know, the, one of our returning teachers, Mrs. Hogan Camp, has expressed an interest in starting. The very basic robotics slash Legos club in the elementary school. So it will start, it will start with us in the elementary school. Roll into the middle school, and then obviously the, the high school program that's really popular. So Mrs. Hogan Camp is very excited to do that when she returns, and we're very excited for that as well.
I, I remember that we had access to some middle school robotics curriculum and programming for the last. Some amount of years. And we, we've talked about this before, but, and I don't remember what the barriers were, but it sounds like facilities is part of it.
Well, this is, this is a club. A lot of the robotics stuff is incorporated into our technology class. They do a lot of programming and stuff in the classroom. So I don't know specifically what.
We, we have.
What you're talking about, Matt, I think is the project leadway program that we brought down through a phase one into the middle school, and Tyler Howard, who's the tech teacher. Does that curriculum with the students.
Yeah, oh, okay, but he's not using the robotics. I, I remember looking at the package. There was actually.
That's what they're talking about now. Getting involved in first robotics as a junior pack.
So it's that, it's that curriculum pack that we weren't utilizing that's gonna go into the club? Is that right? Or is it?
No, I think, I think that what, what Dr. Angelo said is, what you were referring to is in the.
Oh, it's in, it's in the classroom now.
This, the, the robotics for the middle school is very similar. This, the, the robotics for the middle school is very similar to the demonstration that you saw at the board. When the high school team came, except it's in a smaller, they build it, they use a smaller arena and they use a smaller robotics team, but you buy. This package of all the components, you put it together, it's just on a smaller scale.
So does this come from the same organization that runs the um?
They're all connected, yes.
First robotics.
Yeah, okay.
And it, it's not cost prohibitive at all. And, and our plan B is we're going to shake Chuddy down in the parking lot when it gets dark. So, you know, it's uh. We're, we're going to be in good shape for that.
Well, that's, that's interesting. I'm hopeful, yeah.
Um, and I, I like the idea of possible mentoring um opportunities for the high school students to work with. The middle school students. I think there, you know, that's always positive to be able to collaborate and work together.
Agree.
And now the high school.
Sixty five percent chance of showers, but.
Well, we.
John, we, we got a. John, the purchase order for eleven hundred umbrellas today was a little obscene.
Um. In general, we're a very simple place. We kind of got back to the full business of your great um. All of our clubs are running, great to see all of our extracurricular activities running full. Um, we had an amazing athletic season. Um, I hope we had an amazing uh season with our, with our um concerts. Proper productions. I love that the community came out and supported those events. Great uh attendance at that. I thought that was um special. What added to that was an uncommon senior class. You know, even prior to COVID, some of these longstanding traditions. They were. You know, I think everyone always should be looking at, uh, and listening to people about making changes, um, about different traditions all day, et cetera. Um, this year the seniors were, were uh, had just had some spirit and. Were emotional about these things. Were very passionate about continuing some of the things, even some of the things we're willing to like, oh, based on past classes. They were, no, 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 we want to do that. So. I think we're going to start seeing, you know, how much of that was a product of this uncommon, how much of this is, is hopefully, you know, trending in the right direction. Um, I'm hoping, I'm hoping for that. Um, I don't have a ton to present to you academically, um, because I'm much, much more, um, because everything will be. All of the, the finals and regions exam, they all have a very high uh pass rates. Class seven, so I don't have much there. I will tell you that we did get uh preliminary results back from four different. Regions exam, CLA, we did very well. Um, global, we did very well. Um, algebra, I think we are in the same great region about where we were last year. Uh. And then by uh living environment, I think that'd be again, tradition very well at the same time. That information comes as, um, as we go along with the grades. Um. So I think moving forward, uh, some of the big areas, I think it, you know, we. We made big strides over the last few years coming back uh. But I think that the areas of rigor, uh accountability, engagement. I, I think those things are a real challenge. I think that we, they're all over the place. I think a lot of it uh depends on what perspective you're looking at. I think that administrators look at it a little bit differently than a teacher looks at it a little bit differently than a parent looks at it a little bit differently. And I think we're all working at it. But I wouldn't say we are um at our most efficient. Place. And, and I think that that is going to take some time. The challenges that we face are the same exact challenges that everybody is talking about, every administrative meeting, every superintendent meeting we go to. It's all the same conversations, like how do we get back? At least we're all issues before COVID and then it was just amplified. Um, so. Rigor, accountability, our kids aren't coming to school enough. You look at, you look at our attendance rates, um, based on a ten percent uh attendance rate being, being chronic absenteeism, our, our rates are high. I think there's all kinds of different strategy you can possibly take uh to do that and to address it. Um, small schools, so I, I, I've seen a large uh increase in vacations outside of this. Those things have a major impact on our attendance rate and it's also an issue. And I understand that we're coming back from COVID where nobody had anything, you know, nobody had any grace and people are kind of in the mindset of when I have. That. So I think that that's an issue that we need to discuss. Um. I don't know if parents know how hard, I know as a parent, I don't know what the proper. How much pressure to apply and, and with. There's a lot of students who have uh faced some anxiety, some difficulties. Getting back into a normal routine, getting back to pushing themselves. And there wasn't too many days that when I was in high school, um, that I looked forward to. Getting to the school day, I might have heard some other things, but. How do we get back there and how do we, how do we get our kids back to a place where they, they're looking forward to us? That they are interested in what they're learning in class. That's, that's a high bar. That's a high bar. And it was a high bar and a challenge before COVID, but now that we've gone through that, again, it just made everything much, much more difficult. So one of my plans is to um get together with a representative group of teachers, teaching assistants. Mental health folks. And just kind of sit and talk over the summer and, and kind of have a uh initially just kind of have a. This is the lay of the land. This is how we feel. This is our frustration. This is the difficulties that we encountered. Ultimately, uh, maybe two, four or five hour days. The goal would be to come out of that meeting at least feeling as if we are back to paddling in the same direction again. Because I don't, I think we're all paddling, but I'm not necessarily sure. And I think that what we could have to do is we have to, I think we're going to have to be continuously. Get back into next year and I think that they're very short, we have to reach that conversation. Their voice and their interests, what, what they want their school to look like and what is going to make them excited about being there. Balance that and we're fully happy also. Well, I think I see those as being kind of the big challenges moving forward. I also see um social, emotional, um. We have had some very serious mental health uh situations to deal with here and I think that we are going to continue to see that now. The more tense it is. And I think that's also a big part of the conversation. Something I'm probably crying about, talk about frequently. But it's very difficult to educate students and they can't hear. I think that we have to have that difficult conversation and we have to have some fear as to how. I don't have the answer, but collectively, I think we need to keep putting our heads together and hope to establish. I know I'm throwing a lot at you. Um, that is really the gist of what I had. Um. Again, very, very pleased at the, the amount of um. Activities students were able to get back into, but I think we, uh, I think we had a lot of them. The nice thing is that I think we got teachers, students, parents, community that will support that. If you have any questions, I'm happy to try to.
With the senior class, did you have a lot of chronic absenteeism?
Yeah, if you look across the board, again, it's ten percent. Ten percent is.
In that class?
Oh, hundred percent.
Because I know like so many of those students were just sad that it was over. So from where I saw, it's like, ugh, my last day. I mean.
See, I think that we looked at that very much that way, but they didn't necessarily look at that on a Tuesday and October.
Okay.
I think that we're all really. If that's different now, like staying home is different than what was prior to. Right? How hard are we pushed? It, it just didn't happen. We're having regular. That we can't, it's.
Yeah, just trying to think of how we could tap into that enthusiasm.
Yeah, I think it's kind of a little bit added. We have to take a look at it. Celebrating some things a little bit more, but.
And it seems like parents don't have a problem saying, oh, we're going on a vacation um the third week in October, you know. And we're taking our three kids with us. Um. You know, that, that, that's a big problem.
And, you know, coming off of everything that became awful, I understand it and understood it.
Yeah, but still.
But it makes it difficult.
It sure does.
And from a parent's standpoint, that's important time, right? That's important time spent with their family, which I understand and respect. And then from a teacher's standpoint, it's how do I then make that time?
Right. And our numbers are terrible because of.
So that's just one of the, that's certainly not the end all be all of the absenteeism, but that is something that's.
Um, Dr. Rude was accompanied uh with by almost Dr. Gerard and uh three other teachers are, they went out to the Carnegie. Uh, Institute and um, you know, we've had some just early discussions in terms of um focusing on one thing next fall, like chronic absenteeism and. Um, they've brought back some ideas and strategies and as John has articulated, um, perhaps one of the things that we need to do is just focus on. Doing one thing well and, and actually, and I'm stealing um Dr. Root's um thunder here. And, and then modeling that process so that if we do that one thing well, we can then go on to something else, but use that same process. So. Um, chronic absenteeism is, is quickly becoming one because at the end of the day, um, if our students are here, um, we can't. Impart the knowledge and the expertise of our teachers on them. And so we're going to be much less effective if, if we don't have them here. So, um. That's, that's one of the, one of the things that we've been discussing for the fall and engaging our teacher leaders with that as well.
Mid fall, the late fall, I would have some things to report back to. I think I'll have some small pilot. Or anything, uh, put in place.
Um, the, the absenteeism, are we also talking about tardy lateness or is that?
It's all, it's all kind of related.
But it, but in terms of like what you were talking about.
Yes, well, well, fine, but absenteeism, whole absence.
Because I mean, we've talked about tardiness as, as a separate issue before. I'm just wondering if it's. Continued the same or it's gotten better or worse, you know, I would, I would.
I, I, I think it's very close. We're going to break it all, they're going to break it all down.
Yeah.
Um, it's very close. I will say that the, uh, I thought that the senior, um. Senior launch release is something that I. I have a positive impact on the senior class. That's that, you know, that gives them incentive to get this one time. So I think that in that regard, it did have a positive effect. I don't have the exact numbers yet. Um, but I think that they damaged that well enough and we agree with them and it's well enough that I'd like to be giving to that once has been positive.
And it, Chris, I, I know we, we've talked about um tardiness and absenteeism. Um, but I, I think some of the previous conversations have been focused on um the early, you know, primary grades and it's, it's a different problem set. Um, that the social, like the influencing factors are really different in secondary ed versus primary ed there. So I, clearly solutions would be probably totally different as well. Um, I don't have any other questions. Uh, uh, uh. Of course, I want to know what our final count for the year is, but um, do we, do we have some people that have taken us up on summer opportunities here?
So, um, still can't speak definitively on everything. I will say this, last time I think I spoke. Said, I'm hopeful that we're going. And of those four, I know two have.
Over the summer?
Yes.
That's encouraging.
One is, I believe, coming back for another year next year. I feel good about. They're still in the ballgame, able to us. Um, and I'm very hopeful that.
I spoke to one parent, John, who um indicated that they were very appreciative of everything that the high school has done. To try to keep their child engaged. Um, and they're excited to um. Be entering a program at Columbia Green and GED program at Columbia Green and expect to go that route. Um, but certainly um knew that we did everything we could to have them be successful here. Um, just a, a quick thank you to. Uh, our principals, John, Brett and Kristen, but also our assistant principals, um, Justin, Mike and Stacy and of course. Brian, our director of PPS. Um, you know, I think we're ending a, a pretty. Uh, pretty good year, consider, all considered, and I just want to thank them publicly for everything they do each day for our students. So thank you.
Thanks, guys. You get to exhale for like three weeks now?
And as a, as a bonus, I know you all have different commitments this evening with your family, so please feel free to exit when you can.
Thank, yep. Uh. Back to you, Dr. DeAngelo.
So we, I have a little update of a couple of things and then we're going to um bring. Uh, Mike and, and Josh up to do a, an update on our um electric buses. So um, just uh. Full disclaimer, uh, when Mike and I go to Stewart's, it's on a field trip, it's for ice cream, not money. Um, but. That's a whole nother day. Um, again, my compliments to Brett. Uh, I was at Moving Up for Middle School. Um, they, the, the team. Uh, behind him did a, did an awesome job, both uh Mr. Stead and his um, and, and. Mr. Fortran's uh administrative uh team. Uh, Ministry of Support Team did a really nice job with Moving Up on, on Friday evening. Um, as you know, uh, is kind of having been hearing bits and pieces, we'll. Uh, have to be making our decision probably in the next twenty four hours where, where we hold commencement this year. Uh, every time I look at the weather report, I, I, I hope it's going to change, but we'll, um, we do have a couple of things that we're up against. Uh. A few years ago, we bought a second set of um risers so that we could have a set in the auditorium and a set outside so we could make a decision. Uh, closer to the date uh and time. Uh, however, this year, uh, we also have a huge chair rental that we're up against and need to. Make some notifications out. So I, I think by sometime tomorrow, we're going to have to decide one way or the other, which direction we're going in and um. And, and they're different from each other, right? I've been fortunate in all the years I've been here that we've had outside commencements. And uh indoors is not the direction we want to go in if we can avoid it. Um, at any rate, um, there will be the parade afterwards at eight P M. Um, I did see that the Chatham Fire Department also put something out on their Facebook page. This is four years running and I know the community is. Um, really uh come to enjoy uh that event. So we'll be holding that as scheduled. Uh, the last two weeks, our, our architects um have met with, as we had previously reported, with some of the features from the content areas. That are affected by the project. Uh, it's been reported to me that they've had some very productive meetings. Um, to inform the continuation of the design process for our project. So things are right on track uh for that. Uh, we sent you a email in terms of summer programs, so you should have all the information in terms of. The programs that are taking place in each building and the times and durations of those programs. So if you had any questions. About the summer programs, um, please make reference to your email or give us a buzz. Um. And I think the biggest news to share with you tonight is that we get every, as a everyday uh pass as we get closer to having more information about our preschool program. As you know from my communication this week, um, the team. Uh, which consists of Dr. Rude, um, Ms. Reno, Brian Simon, Mike, Mr. Chuddy, uh Kate Gerard and myself. I haven't left anybody out, right? Um, we, we've been meeting on a fairly regular basis and um I'm happy to report that, that we've made a decision based on. Um, the multiple funding sources that we believe will be in place. Um, to offer three sections of pre K for next school year. Uh, we vacillated between two or three and uh we've landed on three. Uh, three is going to offer uh us the opportunity to say that we will have pre K for all. Uh, there is not going to be any need for a lottery at this point. Uh, we had, we now are up to, we picked up one more registrant this week. We're up to fifty children who have registered for preschool, which is kind of um intriguing because our incoming registrations for kindergarten are at forty five. Um, and there is an interesting trend going on in the region. In fact, one of the, one of my counter. In fact, one of the, one of my counterparts in Questar had sent out a survey on Friday asking us to provide the last five-year average of kindergarten enrollment and what we have for next year, because they're seeing a significantly different, uh, enrollment for next year. So our regis, uh, registrar, um, Emily, um, did that for me and over the last five years, our average kindergarten enrollment was at 61. And right now, our current registrants for kindergarten for next year is at 45. And that's, that's being seen by quite a few districts in the Questar region. So we, we're gonna have three sections, um, we will not need a lottery, which means that in fairly short order, we will be notifying our parents, uh, as we had indicated, we would give them much more information by July first. A couple of other highlights, if you recall, we are going to be transporting, uh, those students who are eligible at four years old and up for, for our program. And we were in the final phases of evaluating, uh, the one application that we received from a community, community-based organization, which was Head Start. And, um, and whether they are qualified or don't qualify as a CBO, it will not impact the number of sections that we have. Um, so on tonight's agenda, you're gonna see a late addition, uh, to create a third position for a pre-K teacher and a teaching assistant. That's in direct response to my comments that we're gonna offer three sections for next year. Um, Dr. Rude, uh, Kristen, any, any comments you want to make at this time? Did I forget anything that you think's pertinent, pertinent to preschool? Um, so I don't, I, I would have any quick questions regarding anything before I, I move on to buses?
I mean, I, I'm not surprised to see a little bit of a rebound there. Um, oh, thank you. It'll be interesting to see where that number goes in the, in the next couple of years. Um, forty fives uh, for our kindergarten. Well, in our last couple of years, we're where?
Um, we're at in the 50s this year, easy, right? Mid 50s?
Yes. Typically what happens is we have, let's say, already, if we have 43 have the tenants reading what they plan to come to kindergarten. We usually get four or five families over the summer, either open or say, well, we didn't realize that we're supposed to register for kindergarten. So that number usually goes up anywhere between five and 10 students, but right now our current kindergarten class.
So, um, it's possible that increased, um, community awareness around pre-K, um, impacted those numbers. Um, how many of those kids that applied, did we actually screen? Did we screen everyone?
Uh, well, not everyone, because a couple of people didn't show up, but so we, I know the one person that registered this week certainly wasn't screened yet. And we had a couple of people who didn't show up.
Say 36, it's either 36 or 38 that was screened.
So I guess there's some question of whether those are Schrodinger's children or not, um, you know, if they didn't come to screening, uh, does that mean that, that, that there's a future screening date for them or we don't know?
So, so we tried to reschedule some of those for future screening dates. We haven't had a reply yet. Uh, so if we were going to run two classes, we're going to have to screen them. Since we're running three classes and everybody can participate, there really isn't, uh, it isn't a dire need to screen them. Everybody will get a slot.
Uh, I, I know that there was some community anxiety around, am I gonna get a slot or not? And, and people were aware that that was a consideration, so we may see some of that shake out. Um, I'm, and this is unrelated to, you know, inside the district business, but do we understand where Kids Club is at for next year or do we not?
I just checked with them end of last week and they are still hopeful, but we don't have any. They're working through that process and he assures me that.
But they have, they have a process they're evaluating.
Yes, they, they have a, a strong desire to become qualified to take on the wraparound services for our four-year-olds. That gives them great numbers and capacity, um, but they have yet to complete the process, but there's.
Is it the same regulator?
Office of Children and Family Services, right? Yes.
They're both OCFS and it's the same program?
That, that I'm not certain of.
Yeah.
Anybody, I don't, yeah. Um, one other item that Mike just, uh, reminded me of, and I was going to send you an email, um, this week. But, um, so as you know, we've, um, uh, we had a capital outlay project this year to put in a new electronic sign. And then we found out kind of, uh, the 11th hour that we had to go through zoning. Um, and so thanks to Mike and Will Calhoun and, um, the representatives from Saxton last Monday evening, they did go to the zoning board, they were, um, they were there quite a, quite a lengthy time. A lot of questions came up, um, but we were very grateful that the, um, representative from the sign company in conjunction with our architect and certainly, uh, Mr. Chuddy were able to address all the concerns. They vacillated a little bit in terms of the exact location and orientation, but at the end of the day, um, they have put a few parameters on us, which I think are very reasonable in terms of, uh, turn on, turn off times, brightness, that kind of thing. But I, I don't know if you have any comments, Mike, uh, I think we're moving forward now and, and I would expect that somewhere midsummer, um, we should see our new electronic sign, um, and again, we will certainly follow the guidelines that they have, they have set for us.
What are the, uh, off hours?
I think it's right now, it's seven AM to nine PM, unless there's an event and then it's one hour following an event.
Seems pretty reasonable.
I think it's very reasonable.
Yeah, I mean, at the end, the whole process, it did take time, not gonna lie, it was probably an hour and a half meeting, but in the end they did, uh, uh, did approve and pretty much I agree with everything they said, because really they can restrict it. I know other towns that really restrict signs and I actually think this worked out pretty well, so I was very happy that this was approved that.
Well.
There was, there was a few community members there, because we had, there was three hearings that night. So one was for, one was for another thing, she spoke up a little, she spoke up a little bit about if it was gonna be blinking lights and bright lights, so we addressed.
So I don't have to stare at it out my window, but the firehouse added their, um, variable display board, um, right across from my driveway. I didn't lob it. I, in fact, I was, I did, I disliked it strongly until I realized, um, the community, it actually has a high amount of community value. We see our events out there on the, on the firehouse, right? Um, and I, I think that, I think people will come to appreciate that out of our.
Yeah.
Sign as well. We're, we're putting in an area, it's gonna be the same, where it is now, it's gonna be just moved over one sign length to the right. So you really can't see it down the street. There's nothing across, you know, so it's really not gonna, you know, I don't see there's gonna be much impact and I think it'll be very beneficial. If you want to read it, you don't have to read it if you don't want to, but I understand it isn't a residentially, I get it. I live on the street right next to it, so I understand the parameters they want in place.
Um, well, you know, they've asked us to keep, uh, the content up for a minute, a minimum of a minute at a time and to, um, avoid using crazy kind of animation. So like Mike dancing across the display isn't gonna be one of them. But, and I think all of that is certainly within our, um, you know, our control and, and I'm very grateful that they, they see the value in allowing us to move forward.
So, Mike, you got it through in the first meeting?
Well, we had, we had a meeting with the planning board and then a public hearing. So we, it was two meetings and they were almost gonna table it for summer, but thank God they didn't.
I, I went back four times, then we had to go to the county to get one small.
Yeah, it takes somewhere.
Alternative was gonna be the front of a blue house on Kinderhook, so they, they figured this was, this was much better.
Right. Um, I'm glad that's settled.
So at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Mike and Josh, gonna, um, while they're getting situated, I'm going to bring up a PowerPoint presentation that they're going to use.
Yeah, so I'm just gonna start just a high overview and then I'm gonna have Josh, uh, our transportation supervisor, take over the presentation. First off, I want to thank Josh, uh, for all the hard work, all the hours, uh, being able to get a grant for 1.9 million is, you know, it's a big deal and he worked with Leonard Bus and it was a lot of que- actually, I had a lot of questions for him and we've been working through this for months. Um, I think we have a good proposal in front. There's a million questions. I went to the business official meeting in, uh, Saratoga and there's a ton of questions still, obviously, you know, the costs, the infrastructure. But I think, you know, I think it's a good way to use the grant funding. It will have like 99% of this paid with federal funds, so very small, I wanted a very small impact to the taxpayer, if any at all. So I think we've achieved that and we'll be able to use these funds to just start the process at a very low scale, because if you could change the slide, I just wanna, there's a mandate. New York State was very aggressive in California with their mandates, um. So, New York State's fiscal year, uh, let's see. All new school buses purchased to be zero emission by 2027, so anything you purchase new in 2027 year and forward would, is supposed to be electronic, electric. And all school buses in operation by 2035. So these, this is, and, and we've been talking about this with other districts and it, you know, it's a huge mandate and a huge, you know, is, is, there's a million questions. Is the infrastructure gonna be ready? Is the grid gonna be ready? But I think if we start the process, like I said, using all these funds and actually the business official meeting, because there really wasn't a lot of districts in New York State, uh, one of 20 school districts chose in New York State. I had a lot of the business officials after the meetings, we talked about this, how'd you get the grant funds? Who should I talk to? You know, they all want to get money now. So I was very happy Josh was, you know, on the cutting edge of this and saw that out there and worked a lot of hours and Josh, I appreciate all that time. In, in addition to juggling all the challenges you had with the bus garage, so thank you for that. Um, now I'm gonna turn it over to Josh and then we'll answer questions.
Thank you, uh, as, uh, Mike mentioned, uh, we were the recipient of, uh, of, uh, can you hear me? So we were the recipient of the grant for 1.885 million dollars, uh, to assist with, uh, paying for five buses. Uh, which was broken down into, uh, several different, uh, categories. Uh, initially it was one type A, which is a smaller bus and four type Cs, uh, but we'll talk a little bit more on that, uh, in a few minutes. Uh, we were one of 397 recipients, uh, for the grant in the first round pick. And out of New York State, uh, we were one of 20 that received the grant, which is, uh, quite the achievement. Uh, obviously, uh, with the pricing, uh, or for the amount per bus, uh, for the breakdown for the grant, uh, for a type C, which is comparable to a 64 or 65, 66 passenger, uh, bus, $375,000 allotted per bus. And then for a type A, which is a 24-passenger or less, approximately $285,000. Uh, with that, uh, provides money for infrastructure for the district itself. Uh, so that breaks down to $100,000, uh, which is about, which is, uh, 20,000 per bus, uh, for infrastructure, uh, next slide. So for the infrastructure requirements, uh, we have gone back and forth, uh, with uh, one of the firms, our A and E, our A and E firm, as well as a firm that is, uh, uh, working with Leonard Bus to help those who are going EV, uh, with this project, uh, Cornus Technologies. Uh, and we determined that the best route to take would be going with a two-phase charger, uh, that would meet the requirements for our buses, uh, for charging. Uh, also, it also meets the capacity for what we can hold within the garage. And so it requires 240 volt electricity. It, it's equivalent to a welding outlet, so for those who are familiar with using a welder, uh, that's the same amount of, uh, voltage that goes through that we would require for charging these buses. Uh, the chargers come complete with the charger, uh, the pedestal, uh, the charging port, uh, and it is hardwired. Uh, there are a couple of different phases, uh, there's one, which is a phase one, which requires a plug, this would be hardwired in. A charger would be installed in front of the bus garage, uh, where the reason why we're doing that as because for us to put in the proper infrastructure, it is going to take a considerable amount of money. And the grants will cover everything in terms of the charging, uh, as well as, uh, implementing everything for the infrastructure for the time being. So this is a temporary thing that will go through as we, uh, as we start the process. And with these chargers, it'll take approximately six to eight hours to charge a bus, depending on the size of the battery. Maybe a little bit more depending on if it's a larger bus. Uh, and also, uh, we will require internet service, which we will be working with our IT department here within the district, uh, which, which will help report back to a program which is provided, uh, with the charging stations, uh, that they give, uh, daily updates on the battery, the battery life, if there's any issues within the cells themselves. Uh, they're charging, the percentage rates on the batteries that are charged, so on, so forth. Okay, now into the EV buses. So initially I stated that we, when we put in for this grant, initially my thought was to go for four type Cs and one type A, so four large buses, one small bus. Uh, but since we received the grant and going back and forth with, uh, Leonard Bus, Cornus Technologies, talking to Mike, and amongst hours upon hours of research for this, uh, it is the best interest of the district to go with four type A buses, uh, simply because they are some of the shortest routes within the district. Uh, and I'll explain why that is in, in a couple of seconds, why that's important. And then going for one type C, so a 6644, uh, capacity bus. So the good news is, uh, this is one of the reasons why we're going with a type A only, not only does it meet the requirements for our district and for some of our routes, but also this, uh, the bus itself would be covered, uh, under the grant completely, which is great, uh, because they are not cheap by any means. Uh, so with that being said, uh, there is gonna be a, there will be a little bit of a cost with a type C. Uh, as noted at the bottom, type A bus as of, uh, last Friday, we're looking at approximately 268,341, uh, with a camera system installed. A type C bus as of the same date, we're looking at 408,384, that is based on state bid. Uh, it's a state bid number, that is something that, uh, has gone up within the last six months. Uh, we're, we're talking an increase of 20 to 30,000. Uh, but that, again, that's also including the camera system for the vehicle itself. Okay, so to break down the cost for electric vehicles for the district, so the grant would cover the infrastructure installation, uh, upon having a conversation with, uh, Mr. Davy, head of facilities and Mr. Chuddy, uh, we're looking at approximately 20 to 40,000 for the infrastructure for the garage, just to get us started. And then 33 to $35,000 for the chargers, for the two-phase chargers. And that's with everything that includes the software, that includes a warranty, that includes everything that we would need to start this project for five buses. So as I mentioned, $100,000 would cover the infrastructure costs, so that would pretty much balance everything off in terms of the infrastructure itself for right now. Uh, for type A, for four types A buses, we are looking, looking at approximately 1,773,365. And then for one type C cost is 408,384. Now where the district comes into play, uh, for cost, and this is the only cost that, uh, we have seen with all the, and all the research we have performed on this. Uh, it covers the costs for the type C, uh, uh, so the district would be cover, I would have, we, excuse me, would be required to cover 33,384, which includes 4,700 for camera system and installation. So to cut the cost, we will be trading in two vehicles within our fleet to reduce the amount the district would have to pay. Uh, initially, when we started this project, it would be approximately 10 to 15,000 dollars that district, uh, could pay. Uh, but what we're going to do is we're gonna try to take a couple of avenues to lower that cost that the district would be required to pay for this. Uh, it's that there's a lot of money coming into this project thanks to the government for this, but it, even though they're bringing in quite a bit it to the table with this, that is still a considerable amount of money. So we're gonna do our best to get that down. We will get that down, but the question is how low are we gonna get it? Our ultimate range is between 10 and 15,000 dollars, the exact projected cost that we had, uh, in the first place. So that's the ultimate goal. So the next steps, uh, we initially EPA required a purchase order to be submitted to them or to the vendor, uh, no later than April 28th. Uh, but with communicating with the EPA, uh, several emails back and forth and, uh, uh, numerous phone calls to them, we were able to obtain an extension to July 15th, which would give us time into the fiscal year, uh, to establish, uh, such PO and get everything established. Uh, the grant funds would be sent to the EPA, from the EPA to Leonard Bus Company. And according to documentation, we're looking at approximately 60 days from the time that we submit the PO. So the transaction will be going right to them completely. Uh, according to our representative, uh, we're looking at, including the vice president of operations for Leonard Bus. They had a, uh, a Zoom meeting with our sales representative and the vice president of Leonard Bus last week regarding this. Uh, we're looking at approximately eight to 12 week wait time for charging stations to arrive. And then our type C, the, uh, buses will be delivered, uh, sometime in the winter of 2024. Uh, now, as far as the type A buses, we're looking at a pos, a projected timeframe of delivery of early to mid 2024, when they will arrive to the district.
Um, to, to be clear about winter 2024 for the type C, is that, which winter is that? That's the early part of 2024 or the late part of 2024?
Oh, well, um, uh, that's the early part of 2024, so we're looking between January. Oh, well, um, uh, that's the early part of twenty twenty four. So we're looking between January, between January and March.
Uh, I, I, I understand, um, it, it, all of these charging infrastructures have internet connectivity. Because it's really important to be able to monitor the equipment. For a number of reasons, but mostly just to keep an eye on the health. This is, uh, you know, currently we have a guy that like literally like sticks his face down in the the cover to like look at our fuel pump stations, right? And probably if that technology, you know, if we, if we were to build that infrastructure all new today, um, there'd probably be some technology element to that as well. This is how you monitor infrastructure these days, but, but i- in addition to that, you know, it, there could be a fire risk, right? We'd want an alarm to go off. If, if something fails to, to work properly, we want to know why and we want to be able to not have to call someone out to the site, right? We'd be able to talk to the, the charging company. But I, um, you know, I could, I could geek out on this stuff, I, but I, for a long time, I do have a couple of technical questions, which you may or may not be able to answer. Leonard, um, they're on state bid for this. Are they a major player in gas and diesel as well? I'm not that familiar.
Yes, they are. They're actually one of the largest uh, companies throughout the capital district and throughout New York State.
Okay, eh, outside New York as well?
That I am unsure. I am fair, I'm, I know that they are, uh, they are very much involved with other districts throughout the state, that I do know for a fact.
Okay, um, so two forty um, supply into those chargers, do you know, that, that's fairly low for an electric charging station? Um, I understand the infrastructure constraints. Um, how does that being connected into the buses? Are the buses receiving an AC or a DC connection, do you know?
They will be receiving an AC connection. The DC connection chargers, they are, uh,
It's a whole, whole nother.
It's a totally different realm. We're looking at four hundred and eighty volts that you would
Yeah.
We just do not have the capacity as of this time.
So, so if we did upgrade our infrastructure to four hundred and eighty volt, um, do those buses have a conversion path?
There would actually not be a need for the conversion, simply because the charger would be set up for the said vehicles. So no matter what charger you use, whether it's a phase one, phase two, or phase three, this is from my understanding. Uh, phase one, phase two, or phase three, uh, it is compatible with said vehicle. So it'll go through its motions, it'll go through and charge, but the difference would be the rate of time it would take to charge. For DC, obviously, it's one of the fastest routes for electric, uh, and one of the fastest routes to charge something. Uh, but for our requirements, the AC is the route to take.
Okay, so, uh, I, I'm not sure I got an answer. Like basically what I'm asking is can we rip the inverters out of the buses and convert them over to DC at four eighty, or is that not a
Uh, no, that is not required.
I, I'm curious if it's possible. I'm trying to think, you know, ten years down the line, five years down the line, when we're changing infrastructures and we end up with, we've got gas, we've got diesel, we've got electric one, we've got electric two, we've got four different ways to fuel our buses. That's true, we, well, we'll be phasing them out, but it'll be a long phase out, right? Um, and, and the federal government has a deadline as well, and I don't, we'll see which one catches up to us first, probably New York, but um, okay, well, I, I'm interested in that, if you get to the point of asking that kind of a question, because hopefully we're holding on to these buses for a long time. Um, and not, well, not like our guests.
Per EPA guidelines, uh, once everything is complete with the grant and we receive buses, the infrastructure is in place. We're required to run them for five years. And after that, then we do as we may with them. Uh, but, uh, the, the good news is with these buses during that timeframe, uh, which is great, it's, it's a great safety thing, uh, as far as our mechanics go. Uh, we do have a warranty with each of the buses. There's a five-year powertrain that covers everything. And then after that expires, we still have an eight-year warranty on the batteries. So anything electrical, uh, in terms of the high voltage, uh, in terms of the battery, uh, the high voltage lines within the bus, everything would be sent to Leonard and that would be taken care of. And that would not be an out-of-pocket cost for the district. So, uh, that's a safety thing on, not only for our mechanics and our department, but also it's a cost savings for the district, because those, for one cell battery, you're looking at approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars just to replace the battery. So that is a very, uh, I mean, this would be a, a positive thing for the district.
Disposable buses. So, but it's not five plus eight, it's eight cumutively.
It's eight cumutively for the battery, but five years for the powertrain.
Right, and, and right now, because this technology is so new, that this is the manufacturer's best estimate as to battery life being between eight and ten years, but it's a battery, so as ti- as the battery ages, its capacity becomes diminished. Right, so that'd be, so we'd be able to, we'd be under warranty for eight years, so if there are any issues, um, you know.
The warranty covers the percentage of battery, like health as well? Do we get, do we get a health guarantee on that?
I would have to find that out for you.
Okay.
Good question.
I, I do not know off the top of my head.
What, uh, do we, are these lithium or nickel cells?
They are lithium.
Okay.
They are lithium ion.
It's interesting.
Now, one thing I would like to, this is my little disclaimer on this, there is a lot that is unknown with this. Uh, we are going on recommendations from professionals that deal with us on a regular basis. I've had a conversation, uh, even as, uh, as of today, with the supervisor from Bethlehem regarding their EV uh, fleet. Uh, yes, they are. Yeah, and I had a conversation with him and I said, for the most part, they are, uh, they're, they're pretty decent.
They running Leonard as well?
No, they are running a competitor.
Okay.
They are running a competitor, but, uh, but I, like I said, a nice conversation with, uh, the supervisor up there who provided some, a little bit more insight in terms of safety concerns and, and, and whatnot, so.
How do, how do we pay for electricity in that building? Is this, um, peak, peak usage or?
I'd have to check with Andy. I could, we could check that question.
You get electric, electric through the consortium, though, right?
Consortium rate, so. For the whole district.
Yeah, but it might change our pattern.
I mean, there's, so basically, just, you know, and what, we've spent tons of time and Josh, even more than that, uh, this, we've, um, been thinking about this. I look at it and I talk with sale and that's why, yeah, one point six million we received, obviously if we turn it down, we won't be eligible to receive federal funds again. It's, we're starting the process, right? Because I have a billion questions, to be honest with you, and how this is going to work, but it's going to cover, like I said, if I can get that trade-in to get it down to about fifteen thousand dollars, I gotta, that's going to come out of our equipment budget. I don't have funds to do a lot more, that's why we couldn't. If I was going to do the five buses on a standalone and pull the energy, you know, it's a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. It's a capital project. It's going to be millions of dollars to put something in place for all the buses, so. Like I said, there's a million questions, but I look at it, we're starting, we're taking almost all the federal money, and we're trying it. We're going to see how it works. And, and we'll see what, you know, we'll see how everything pushes up, because there's seven hundred districts that have to deal with this, so. The grid's going to have to handle it, so we'll see how it goes, but I look at it, we're getting almost all of it funded. I, I originally wanted it all funded. I thought we were going to have it all funded, but the prices already are increasing, so if we're going to spend fifteen thousand up for one point six million, I'm okay with that. We have some equipment money we'll put to that. The rest will be covered by the federal.
The depreciation pattern on our gasoline buses is not turning out the way we had hoped, so it, it will save us money just to have those.
All the buses, a, 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 a large bus is about a hundred and twenty thousand, a hundred and thirty, it lasts twelve years, so this is four hundred and eight thousand it lasts.
Not all our buses have been lasting twelve years.
On, on average, they do. We had a couple trouble buses that he's getting rid of, but other than that, if you look at the whole history, it's te- at least ten years we've been keeping the buses. So this isn't really saving money, it's not, oh, it's going to last longer, you know, it's going to help, you know, the goal is to have a cleaner environment, but we're all struggling with this, and like I said, I went to the conference and they're, they're, they're discussing, the higher-ups are saying, you know, we're going to have to work with you guys and see how we're going to do, because it's a very aggressive timeline for New York State.
Is there a reason why there was four of the class Cs? Is there a way we could drop to three and that would cover the extra costs?
No, because you can only put so much per, you can only put so much for, per bus. So what we thought is we'll get four covered totally, the infrastructure covered, and we want to have one large bus, we want to try using it and see what it's like, so. But I said, like, if we can net out fifteen thousand, I've got an equipment budget, I can do that. It's worth, it's worth to try the big bus too.
Uh, that is a good question. Obviously, with each vehicle, uh, the size of the battery, obviously, it plays a big role with this. Uh, uh, with a phase two charger, we're looking at anywhere from six to eight hours primarily, but it could be more depending on the size of battery. No, ma'am.
Okay.
No, now, one thing I would like to point out, uh, another reason, as I mentioned earlier, uh, for the presentation, that the type A's would be very beneficial to the district, and I can explain. With a charge, a battery that is fully charged on a bus, with not including capacity, not including uh, climate, not including the terrain that the driver will be taking that vehicle to and from, you have approximately eighty miles per charge. So with that being said, a lot, our in-district runs, they run anywhere between twenty and thirty miles for one part of the day. So with that being said, uh, this would make the most sense to keep those in-district close proximity. Uh, and, uh, that way we can maintain some type of charge, so in the event that if we need to use them, let's say in the event that they're, they're required, they will evacuate. We need to have those vehicles on the ready, unlike a gas and diesel bus. So if they have a certain amount of charge in them, then we can get them to where they need to go. So obviously, uh, routing is going to play a, a key role with us, so.
And we have one of our ace mechanics in the audience, what I heard when we were visited to Kana Kill's, I think it was with Leonard, right, that you're, you, um, is that a lot of the other parts of the bus are standard, um, products, right? Like your brakes and your rotors and a lot of the other stuff that we would, we, we would potentially be doing long-term, some of the maintenance on that, those items, correct?
That's correct, so the, the braking components, uh, obviously tires, uh, our exterior lights, our marker lights, our ambers and reds. Uh, that's all pretty much, uh, that's all pretty much the same. So that's something that the, our mechanics will be required to go through with their preventative maintenance program. But as far as anything that deals with high voltage electric, that is something that, uh, Leonard Bus, uh, would be taken care of. That'll be something that'll be out of the equation.
One of the questions I asked, and it'll certainly be a question about their capacity, was that when we take a bus out of service, there would be a potential for a loaner.
Yeah, that is correct.
I was correct, right? So if they, if the bus is under warranty and it's going to be out of commission for a few weeks, because you have to imagine that this is new for them to build their capacity to repair electric buses at a depot kind of scenario, then they would provide us with a, with a loaner bus, uh, in the interim, should we need it.
Do we have a warranty clawback if they don't come through?
I, that's something we should probably think about.
Because there may not be one.
We, we're also going to get some long extension cards.
I don't have any other questions, guys. Sorry for, sorry for.
I know that, as I mentioned at the beginning of this, there is, this is still a very fluid situation that we are trying to, to understand, try to get as much information as possible. Uh, and we will be, in the upcoming weeks, be receiving more information. Uh, one other thing I would like to in, include with us, uh, as a conclusion, sort of say, uh, there will be safety training for this. We will be incorporating it through, uh, through Cornus Technology. They're going to be coming in, providing safety training for, not only for our uh, members, uh, in the shop, uh, but also for emergency personnel, uh, our tow companies that we utilize. Because it's very important they understand, uh, what to do with these electric buses. As I've mentioned, uh, several times tonight, this is a very, it's very new to us. And there's a lot that's unknown, but they're willing to come in to, to ensure that safety is being promoted with every aspect of transportation.
To some extent there, with twenty districts, uh, in the state, and I don't know which percentage went with, um, Leonard, there's a lot at stake for them to help us be successful.
Oh, that job.
The next one is the twenty seventh.
Yes.
We had, we have, Josh has scheduled two. Um, one earlier this month, but, and I forgot what the date on that one was, it was a Saturday, right? And now, um, because school ends on Friday, next Tuesday, uh, we'll be doing the same, and then we, we, I'll certainly report back to the board to see if we get a, you know, a decent turnout again.
I don't have any other transportation questions, you guys.
Thanks, Josh. Greatly appreciate it. And that includes superintendent's report for this evening.
All right, guys, I know we're after seven here, um, policy committee, Pat.
We met last week, um, went through all the six thousand series, which we said we were going to try to get through. Um, we have a couple that we're still working on, we're waiting for some, into vice legal, and we're just wrapping up trying to um, but finish some final editing. However, you might be happy to know, of the six thousand, there are like twenty four policies that we currently have. Um, we're looking at, still looking at four of them, but we're trying to wrap up. We're recommending seven so far. Um, that to, for you all to look at and adopt next year. However, we are recommending to resend thirteen of them, so that was a really good number. Um, mostly because a lot of them were based really on law, or they really weren't, even according to this, they weren't really needed. They weren't essential, so we do recommend that they would be.
Right, and, and we don't need policies for things that are law, right?
Unless the law has some sort of, you know, options that we have to make a decision on. Otherwise, really, you know, there's no need to, and, and some of those, too, the laws keep changing. So for us to keep updating our policy, we probably would never be really be perfect. Uh, so, so it's better that we don't have those policies in place. So anyway, um, I'd like to give you a quick rundown of what we've done so far. So far this year, we've looked at roughly a hundred and eighteen policies. And, uh, we're recommending that we resend forty of them. Uh, and we're recommending that we adopt seventy one of them. And there are like seven still that are being reviewed.
This may be too early in the year to figure it out, we're going to need a new policy season, but, um, any thoughts to renumbering? We, we have to send that back, right?
Send it back, this is going to do the number, because it's going to have to match their numbering.
Got it.
However, we're, we're going to have to go through our entire review of policies, finally decide which ones after they're voted on. Or we're going to retain, and then at that point in time, send them to Nisa for the renumbering.
Yeah, our original PO in, included that, right? So they're just waiting on us when we get to that point, we send it back to them and they'll renumber.
Um, let's hope there's no expiration date on that PO that we already paid for, right? Oh, the part that we okay, okay. All right, we got them on the line. And so, but, policy committee doesn't have another date, right?
Not this year.
Yeah, and then, uh, it'll be a new, a whole new committee formation season, which, um, usually by the end of July, we have those straight, um, uh, maybe earlier, we'll see. I think that's it. Do you guys have any policy questions for Pat? You have to like wring her brain, the last of her.
I have her email.
All right. Um, I don't, I don't have any questions. Uh, that, that's, that count, um, it's not in the notes today, but, uh, whatever notes you're looking at, can we circulate those? In terms of your current status of? Great, yeah, or, or leave it in policy drive, one or the other.
Everything's going to be out there as, you know, once we finish up, and I'll get everything, and then six baskets will put out for the, um, in the drive. But under the policy drive, everything will be out there. So next committee can start again. Including with a worksheet, so.
Well, I, I think overall, you got, you got farther than maybe we, we thought you might, um, because it was I know when we were, at the beginning of this process, we weren't even sure if you'd make it to halfway in this. I know when we were at the beginning of this process, we weren't even sure if you'd make it halfway in this session, so.
Ideally, you know, I always try to, you know, push a lot. And I'm I'm I guess I'm trying to be optimistic, thinking we're gonna get through it. And uh, but what we have coming up, a number of them in the 7,000 we've got just looked at over the last couple of years. So a lot of them are, they're gonna probably, we're not gonna but as we're finding out, the ones that we haven't looked at over the years, you think are, you know, they first glance, they look like nothing major, but as we get discussing them, we find that it's a lot of we have a lot of questions.
All right.
I take a little bit more time to finalize our positions on.
Thank you, Pat. Um, I think we're in the public library advisory committee. Um, and these are in consensus, right? The uh appointments? Okay, so Beth? I feel like I can't keep track of who's reporting.
The majority of the meeting was to look at our new director and evaluate her, which we all gave her very high rankings. We really were ve- very, very pleasantly surprised because we were very happy with the lady who had left and didn't really think we'd ever get somebody quite as articulate and coordinated that way, but Amanda is wonderful. So she got high rankings all the way across the board.
Okay. So um she'll settle in over the summer and um, when when do we have our next library report? It's like pretty far away at this point, right? Yeah, but we just did it recently, right?
We did during budget season.
Yeah.
But we, what we did say is we were gonna invite John in the fall so that everyone could meet him.
Yeah, okay. Sure, go ahead.
Donations to friends of the library. And we now have on premises, furniture. Have probably eight new beautiful chairs, things, tables. Some of them are, it'd be wonderful to stand and see them. They're just beautiful. It makes the library very homey. Some of them from the uh beautiful window, some of them are from the fireplace. Um, that's um and also the list program we have in our library during the summer. So so wonderful. Our librarians report is so great. Every every month, I think, God, I should probably this off, you could score remember, but you couldn't believe what what they do over there. Uh, we can't sit, we don't sit here and sit here and read all the, it's very impressive. And it's all on the website. Uh, take a look to see what they do. We have new uh buttons, uh, they uh donated, the chair was donated, the buttons on the railings uh going into the library. Our automatic door broken so that she works on the pole.
Excellent. Okay, uh. So um we are in the new business. Um, R 62 be it resolved, the Board of Education approved the following summer curriculum projects for 2023. Can I have a motion? Uh, any questions or comments on R 62? Um, there's a lot here. We could probably spread this out over several meetings, but do you guys have? No. No questions for tonight? Okay. Uh, well, I'm I'm looking forward to um to this charge set out for our instructional leaders. Uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay. Uh, R 63 be it resolved, the Board of Education authorize its designee to enter into an agreement pursuant to the terms and conditions discussed in executive session to resolve a student matter number 24166. Um. Of course, we can't go into detail here. Um, but um uh, uh, first of all, can I have a motion on R R 63?
Motion.
So this was resolved as discussed within the parameters of our last executive session on the topic. Um, does anyone have any generic questions before we pass? All right, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? R 64, be it resolved that the Board of Education approved the M O A with C S E A dated June 20th, 2023. All, uh, can I have a motion?
Motion.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? R 65, be it resolved, the Board of Education approved the M O A with the D C S D P A. Which is, um, can I have a motion? There a second? This is the um Principal's Association. Did I skip something?
Okay.
Okay, uh, no, there was, there was two separate MOAs.
I must have printed it for the second one, so it's, I was like incomplete copy, that's okay. Uh, second.
Any any questions on this one? All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? And this one's pretty exciting. R 66, be it resolved, the Board of Education appoint Colliers International as our construction manager for uh the $22 million capital project.
Second.
Um, I have one question. Um. The standard form of agreement has been modified. Um, I presume that that was as a result of um both the scope of the project and the the, you know, the negotiations with Collier. Um, did that go to to district legal? Okay. Yeah, it's a long contract. I went through all the markups and I was thinking, this is a lot of markups. Um, I felt good that it was a standard agreement, though. Uh, any other questions on this one? So Colliers ran our project last time. Um, as as construction manager. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? And we have our pre K position creations. R 67, be it resolved with the Board of Education hereby creates a one F T E position for a pre K teacher. Can I have a motion?
Just a comment on that and Mike, check me if I'm I've referred to our decision for three sections based on our current anticipated funding. I just want the board to know that this will not impact um, the general fund budget. Um, any to any greater extent than what's been previously discussed.
Thank you. Uh, did we get? Second. Um, we already discussed this one, but do you guys have questions on the new section? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? And R 68, be it resolved, the Board of Education hereby creates a one F T E position for teacher assistant. Can I have a motion? All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? And of course, it's end of year, so the consensus agenda is packed here. Um. R 69, be it resolved, that the Board of Education accept consensus agenda K through M as written. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Uh, before I ask for your votes, I wanna run through with a couple notes here. So hold on here. In personnel, of course, we have um some resignations and we're appointing that our student help. I I don't have any comments or questions in personnel. Do you guys have any questions? Okay.
I have something here. In our defensive agenda, we have a donation from the alumni association. But the alumni pay the last one because the alumni association is like going out of business.
Yeah, we discussed this last meeting. Uh, we we did. It's 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 emotional, really. Um. Uh, and and you know, we're really thankful. Um, and I I think we we split this into, there was a separate donation last meeting, right?
Right. They they always um take care of the moving up ceremony and a couple of the traditional ones. This donation is, they've taken their current um, assets and they have projected throughout the entire school year, all those donations they make, and they're making it all at once. And then, as I mentioned, um, I hope this is appropriate, the the remaining balance is gonna be donated to the education foundation to be distributed uh yet again to to our programs um in the district, so.
Yeah, it's it's um it's too bad no one stepped up, but um I'm, we're very thankful for their service. Um.
I also want to just welcome our our anybody that we're um approving this evening. Uh, a particular note, um, we have both a school site, uh, school social worker leaving us. We have now um hired a replacement. That young lady is a former graduate, um, and also had done a small stint with us through Columbia County when we had the uh, in school clinic. So um, and she um, name might sound familiar because she married a teacher's son, but um and then also, we're pleased that we um had some strong candidates for the speech pathology position, which you uh we're creating in conjunction with our preschool program. So very fortunate, um, very strong candidates as of late, so maybe not a a ton, but the ones that we're getting, we've had a good a good, strong candidate.
We we also have in uh in in business finance, um, we've got some uh of course, we've got some some contractual awards, but we've got the end of year um surplus, um, excess fund transfer. Uh, we talked about reserves and the reserve plan, but do you guys have any questions? Okay. Nothing to add, huh, Mike? All right, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? We are into items for future agenda. Um, you know Fred and um and Chris aren't with us uh at the moment, so I don't wanna I don't want to make any too too detailed plans without them, but um, we we do want to get together over the summer. Um. We are, and does anyone else have items for future agenda you want to pick up? I mean, that we're 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 finishing up a board session, the new session's coming. Now's a great time of year to like throw something on the table. Yeah, okay. Great. All right, with that, we are in second public comment. Um, this is an open public comment for um members of the community to speak for three minutes about any issue that could pertain to Chatham Central Schools. Um, so if anyone wants to speak, they can sign in, um, or they can raise a digital hand. Do we still have any digital?
We have no one left online.
Thank goodness they're enjoying the weather without us. All right. I think um with that, you know, we we did have we did have someone earlier, but maybe we'll we'll get that comment via another channel. Um, we, I I do anticipate um the need for a very brief executive session to speak speak about um the employment of a specific individual. Um, we are um, I think I would like to award a um a district clerk pro tem from inside the board and we'll release our district staff. So with that, um be it resolved to enter executive session. Can I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? And does anyone want to volunteer? Pat, you want your last chance? Uh, motion to appoint myself. Um, uh district clerk pro tem for the executive session.
Motion.
All in favor?
Hi.
And I do not anticipate a need to return to open session. I hope Debbie's got one of those fill in the blank.
I I got it for you.
Oh, you got it?